So, um, oh, not quite yet. There we are. Okay. So, starting just a couple of minutes late, but here we are. And thank you for being here tonight. And the first item on the agenda is prayer and our invocation. And from Bonnie McDonald.
Thank you for inviting me to come and open in prayer tonight. So if you would bare your heads with me. Oh, Heavenly Father, King of the Universe, we invite you to come and watch over our meeting tonight and bring your ideas on how to keep our city safe, how to keep our people safe, how to help the sick and the needy, how to bring prosperity back to Grants Pass. We give you our city, our beautiful city of Grants Pass. And we say, have your way in Jesus's name. Amen.
And now if you will remove your hats and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, beginning this evening, we have a public hearing resolution accepting the Community Development Block Grant Program. And we have a presentation from Ann.
Good evening. Ann Ingles, City of Grants Pass. And tonight, we are going to be reviewing the CDBG program 2024, year five, Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, which is the CAPER. At the end of each program year, HUD requires us to do this report to talk about the accomplishments and the federal dollars that we spent for the program year. It meets all the council goals. Each year HUD does require the city to produce this final report showing the accomplishments and achievements in the report, and it's called the CAPER. The hearing tonight is to acknowledge the CAPER for the program year 2024, which is year five, the final year of the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan. As specified in the city's CDBG Citizen Participation Plan, a public hearing is required to acknowledge the draft CAPER and be accepted by the council. It also provides the public a final opportunity for input from them on the achievements for that year. During Program 2024, the city allocated more funds for the Weatherization Rehabilitation Program than we have in previous years. And those funds were depleted early in the program year. We rehabbed 26 homes during the year. Our public service partners expended their allocations early in the year. And any remaining uncommitted funds from the year will be used during this year, the program 2025. The resources were, we had 381,398 in regular funding. We had 167,455 remaining in program year 2023 for a total of $548,853. The expenditures from October 1, 2024, to September 30, 2025, we had 209,335 for rehab and housing, 56,580 for public facilities, 55,743 for public services, 5,115 for micro enterprise for the Small Business Development Center, and 87,237 for general administration and planning. And that also included some overage funds of 2023 program year. So we had a total of $414,010 that we spent in program year 2024. The highlights, the city and their partners made significant advances in achieving identified goals for program year 2024. Seven households were saved from eviction or loss of utilities. 1,213 U's were supported by the Boys and Girls Club, Hearts with a Mission and Maslow Project combined. Thirty individuals were supported through Welcome Home in Oregon. Sixteen were supported with micro enterprise technical expertise and training. Three hundred and fifty-four homeless received food from St. Vincent de Paul Mobile Food Kitchen. Security doors were installed at the Boys and Girls Club. The CDBG funds also supported materials for an ADA all-inclusive playground installed at the Redwood Elementary School. ADA push buttons were installed in the public rescue restrooms at Siskiyou Health Center. The challenges were, as always, the 15% cap on public services, which is set by HUD. And then also having an adequate supply of buildable land for development of housing, shelters, transitional housing, and consistent operational funding for shelter and transitional housing managers. Call to action is you must open the public hearing to receive any final comments on the draft 2024 year five CAPER. Alternatives, council is required to hold the final public hearing and acknowledge the plan. Motion suggested was I move to acknowledge and accept by resolution the CDBG program 2024 year five CAPER. Any questions?
Any questions from council? Rob?
Yeah, thanks, Ann. I'm not familiar with the 15% cap on public services, which is set by HUD. Can you explain that a little bit?
Oh, the 15%? Yes, when, um, in 1974 is when HUD put together this, the consolidated, the Community Development Block Grant. Primarily, it was for housing. And they did quite a few years with just housing, but then they had the demand for public services. And so they incorporated that into, but they capped it at 15%. So it's been that way for quite a while.
Public services, can you define that?
Public services would be like, like we have Hearts with a Mission, we have Boys and Girls Club, we have Maslow Project, we have the micro enterprise. Those are all deemed public services, where you're offering a service.
Other questions? All right, now we will move on to, since this is a public hearing, comments from the audience. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this agenda item? And seeing none, we will bring it back to council for discussion. Any items for discussion? Looking for possible, uh, resolutions or actions? Joel?
So I'll move to acknowledge and accept by resolution the Community Development Block Grant fiscal year, P-year. I'm not sure what that is. Fiscal year, 2024, year five CAPER.
And I have a second from Eric. Any other items of discussion from council? Joel?
I just want to acknowledge the help that the community is getting. And it's passed through dollars from the federal government. I understand that. So, thank you for what you do as staff and also for the public to know that that's available for them.
All right, we'll take a roll call vote. We'll start with Joel.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will also vote yes, and so this motion passes. And the staff have direction. Okay, thank you. And then moving on, our next agenda item is an ordinance vacating the common property lines among tax lots, 100, 300, 400, 500 of the map. This is a quasi judicial meeting. So at this time, I will open the public hearing to consider this motion, consider the application as filed, the application for the ordinance vacating the common property lines that I mentioned before. We will begin the hearing with a staff report, followed by a presentation by the applicant, statements by persons in favor of this application, statements by persons in opposition to that application, and an opportunity for additional comments by the applicant and staff. After that has occurred, the public comment portion will be closed and the matter will be discussed and acted upon by council. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council President, councilors, members of the public, Bradley Clark, it's Community Development. This would potentially be one of the last of these property line vacations that you see. We, we just submitted last week an application to change this process so that it would become potentially administrative. But we still have it in place, so here we are. So the application before you tonight is related to the site downtown between J and K Streets. This is the site where the Library District has acquired the property and they are looking to construct a new main branch at this location. It's highlighted there in yellow, right between Sixth and Seventh Streets. There's four tax lots involved, 100, 300, 400, and 500. But I'll show you another map that shows there's actually 12 platted lots that are underneath those, those four parcels. So they're looking to consolidate all of this property into just a single building parcel. It relates to the council goal of economic vitality and growth and diversification by working closely with property owners to incentivize development. So, here's J Street on the top, K Street on the bottom, Sixth and Seventh Streets on both sides. So this is the full block. There used to be an alley that was platted through there. That was vacated many years ago. But there does today still remain 12 lots that were part of the town of Grants Pass. And so the proposal tonight is to remove all of those platted lot lines and just create a single boundary. And of course, the main reason we do this, that an applicant needs to do this, it gives them much more flexibility when they're situating their, their building on the land so they don't cross over property lines. This is just an aerial showing you the existing building. There's the River City Establishment on the, on the east end and a few other tenants in that building today. And then other off-street parking. So here's a site plan that shows the proposed library with a kind of a plaza area that faces out onto Sixth and then about 45 parking spaces that would be accessed off Seventh. And as you can see, the, the building itself would encroach on almost all of those properties. There's a, the property is about split in half between where they would propose to have the structure and what would be off-street parking. So the off-street parking doesn't necessarily need the property line vacation, but there is no harm in proceeding to do that, just to consolidate it. So here are the two requirements that the council is required to look at for property line vacations. Staff looked at those and we do think that they comply. There were no public comments received as a result of the public notice that we sent out. And here's your call to action. We have the action ideally tonight, and then there's a motion on the screen there.
Questions from council? And Indra?
The off-street parking, is that changing at all from what it is currently?
Yes, yes, it is. The, the parking today is mostly accessed onto the, the south side. And it kind of extends along, uh, that'd be K, I guess. And then the proposed, they're kind of completely changing the proposed configuration because that existing building is proposed to be demolished. So they would, so most of the existing parking kind of, you know, would kind of be in this, this area here. So they are proposing all of the parking kind of along the eastern half of the, of the property.
And then I know the library is part of the Library District. They get their own taxes on our bill. Will they, does the city get any of that or anything on the property tax for that building, the new library?
I don't know the answer to that. JC might-
Likely no unless they're running some kind of commercial operation, like maybe a small something in there that only the square footage of the commercial operation would be accounted for.
Eric?
On slide two there, it says encourages economic vitality, growth, and diversification by working closely with property owners to identify barriers and incentives for development. Can you explain that a little bit? Expound on that, I guess?
Sure.
How that does that?
Yeah, well, there's, there's a, there's a pretty long track record in, you know, a lot of urban centers of how libraries attract, you know, a population, a pretty large population that then, you know, often spend a significant amount of time. And it's usually, you know, to, whether they're at the facility or just walking or biking or, you know, driving somewhere close by after they come into the library. And so I think the, the purpose of that statement is really kind of inferring that, you know, a, a library has the potential to kind of have that ripple effect, if you will, you know, kind of through that immediate neighborhood as people come to that location and then spend, spend some time. And then there's, they're also proposing, you know, to have quite a bit of space in the facility for rent for the, you know, for different events or, or just open for free for different events. So there would be a, a lot more community, anticipated community use of the, of the facility than what they have now just because of the, you know, the expanded 23,000 square feet is, quite a bit of that would be available for use for, for those kind of purposes.
Thank you.
So, could you go back to the slide that shows the existing tax, tax lots, please?
Sure.
Thank you. So, right here, we have, how many businesses are there currently?
I believe it's four, four or five. The River City Grill and there's, 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 I think, at least three others.
Oh, okay. And at this time, so those, those businesses are on our tax lots, are on our, in our tax base? Or is that, is it already tax exempt because of the owner? Or how is that working right now?
No, no, the, it's, it's really based on the use, so-
That's my thought.
Yeah, yeah. So because those are private businesses, there, there is tax associated with that.
Right. So you mentioned that libraries will attract and bring in a lot. I mean, the library is here, you know, just basically a few blocks away at this point. So do we have any economic indicators about how our library is bringing in, you know, the business and that you spoke about before about, you know, theoretically libraries bring in?
I do not have that tonight. The Library Foundation might have that. Rebecca Stoles is the applicant for this. But the Community Development Department hasn't seen that.
Okay. And I have two other questions. So this is under our relationship to council goals on economic development. But I can't help but notice we're going a little backwards here with this particular property. So we're losing four businesses from the tax rolls. And so I, I was just wondering, maybe, maybe that's just a comment. But I, but I was wondering why it was under the council goal of economic development? And I guess it was for the theoretical business that a library could bring in?
I, I think that's correct.
Oh, okay.
You know, I mean, there's, there's a, there's a, you know, a lot of subjectivity, no doubt. When we, staff identifies the various goals that are there, but an investment of several million dollars into the downtown core, you know, in and of itself certainly has, has some benefit because of the construction activity and the jobs that are associated with the, that, the multi-year project.
Oh, yes, certainly. And then my last question was, I wasn't sure about the off-street parking property vacation that you were talking about. You said that it, it's probably not needed, but there's no reason not to do it. But I wanted, if you could explain that to me a little bit more.
Oh, sure. Yeah, let me go back to their plan here. So, um, so the 12, so the alley kind of runs across the middle of this east-west. And then there's, there's six slots on the north and six slots on the south. So even in this area on the eastern half where they're proposing parking, we don't have any rules that say that you can't do parking over property lines as long as you could come up with an easement. We do have rules that say you can't put a structure over those property lines or, you know, crossing utilities and things like that. So that, my comment was just kind of clarifying that technically, you know, you might be able to reconfigure. But they, the Library District, as the property owner, you know, has the right to propose what they would like. They, they would just like to have this all under single ownership without any lot lines. Does that, does that answer the question?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay.
And do we have a presentation from?
No, Rebecca, I know, was notified. She is not here though tonight.
Okay. And do we have any members of the audience who would like to speak on this item? Okay, yes. Please come up and state your name and your residence. And you have two minutes.
Reka Brown, Grants Pass. A library is worth its knowledge, the knowledge of the library, the books. A lot of us want to, want, want to actually read from books and want our children to. And I grew up going to the library, picking out about a half a dozen books and each one by the next weekend. And I've learned a lot, reading, a lot more reading than I ever learned in school. You get a whole lot of different viewpoints that you don't get in a school. School libraries, though, are quite useful too, in that regard, but they aren't as big. And I love the idea of a whole city block dedicated to knowledge and learning. And it's free because, well, it's, it's a tax district. And we don't have to pay that tax so much. Well, we have to pay it, okay? It's not much. It ain't. It's definitely worth the money we spend on it and more. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the audience who, yes, please state your name and, and your residence, and you have two minutes.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Weber. I live on the north side, on Northwest Morgan Lane. I think that's fantastic. I also grew up spending a lot of time in libraries. I don't have kids yet, but I'm looking to have kids down the line. And I think that's a huge resource for young people in our community. I think the way that it's designed in the middle of town is an opportunity to bring people of all ages to our downtown space. And I really like how the library is facing Sixth Street. So as people come off the interstate and drive down Sixth Street, they see the library facing that street. I think it presents the town in a really good light. I don't have two minutes worth of things to say. I just think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other audience members who would like to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Rob?
Yeah, I, I completely agree with the members of the audience who spoke tonight. I think that anybody who owns property in that general area or businesses, and I know two such people are basically high-fiving each other over the, the prospect of increased property values and basically increased business with having such a, a center at basically no or very low, basically no cost to us to have that kind of investment put in our, in our downtown. I think it's, it's just going to be really good for the surrounding businesses, surrounding property owners. I think property values will do nothing but go up because of it. The only, I guess I have a, a small question maybe for Brad. Is there any, you know, being concerned with the four businesses that are potentially being displaced? Do we have any kind of fund that helps with defer, depla- displacement costs or anything like that specifically in a situation like this?
Not, not really a dedicated city fund per se for that reason. The urban renewal money, if there was any urban renewal money involved, which at this point, there has not been an application to use any urban renewal money for this project. But if there was urban renewal money involved in a project where you do have displacement, there is some provisions in the Oregon statutes that, that say you actually are required to look at how those displacements might be mitigated and use some, potentially some URA money for that. But at this point, that wouldn't be, you know, a fund because there, there is no proposal to, to use URA money.
Okay, so if, if councils chose to allocate some URA money for this, then the other aspect might, might be triggered and there would be a potential for displacement. Okay, it's, that's a discussion for another night, but I definitely would, or another day, I definitely would, I'd like to see council discuss the possibility of, and not just in this case, but possibly in future cases as well, where we've got some kind of displacement, displacement help for businesses like this when we've got growth going on and yet we have a viable business that, that needs a place to go. But again, that's a discussion for another time. Thank you.
Indra, and then Rick.
This is a question, this is a question also. And I know it's not a requirement, but do we know if, because this has happened in another area of our town, do we know if the library has offered those businesses any incentive or monies to relocate? do we know if the library has offered those businesses any incentive or monies to relocate? Do we know that?
I don't, you know, I mean, this application is very, very early in the process because, you know, it's just related to the property line vacation. It really doesn't deal so much with the structure itself. They've been the landlord now for a while. So, and I know that there certainly has been some communication, but I could not tell you what those communications are about.
Tonight I will also be in favor of this application because it allows young families the opportunity to go to the library, take out the books, study, but also for adults, an opportunity to improve themselves as a better employee. So, we have a very active library here, and I'm supportive of this action tonight, thank you.
Other comments from looking for possible motions or direction? Indra?
Yes, I think the library is a wonderful thing for kids especially. I brought my kids to the library often. It is sad that we lose a big tax base, so hopefully we can make up for that in other ways. But I will move to approve the ordinance vacating the property lines between tax lots 100, 300, 400, and 500 of map number 360518DD, first reading.
And I have a second, oh, right, a second from Rick I saw, I should have said to begin with. We'll begin, a roll call vote, we'll begin with Joel.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 And I will vote no because I am worried about the businesses, but the motion does...
So, with that, we'll read it title only, with Julie reading that title only.
Thank you.
And then it will be moved to the next business meeting because it was not unanimous for a second reading.
An ordinance of the council of the city of Grants Pass vacating the common property lines between tax lots 100, 300, 400, and 500 of map number 36-05-18-D-D.
Okay, all right, and so our next agenda item is a resolution amending the Oregon Transitional Housing Standard. And we have a presentation again from Bradley, thank you.
Thank you. So, this, let me get this pulled up here. So, this application is directly related to the grant that you recently awarded to Elk Island for the homeless shelter. And this topic tonight has several changes to the code that we have in place now. So, I'll try to just quickly walk you through what the changes are proposed to be, and then just, we can go back and review any of those in more detail that you'd like. So, this, it's a resolution, and it would amend the Oregon Transitional Housing Standard. This is adopted under Title IX of the city's municipal code. It's adopted by reference, so it's kind of a standalone document that we have that was adopted in 2020. And as I mentioned, the purpose of it is to facilitate the development of a new homeless shelter by Elk Island Trading Company. There's probably three main goals that it addresses, public safety, housing homelessness, and infrastructure. So, the council's approval under Resolution 257633, that was the 1.17 million to Elk Island Trading, that contract had a contingency in it that required the adoption of a text amendment to the city's Transitional Housing Code. They primarily put that on the city to process this amendment. Excuse me. The wording there is "as soon as reasonably possible, unless such amendment would result in an unreasonable risk to public health or safety." So, that's the quote that is in the agreement with Elk Island. So, this is an interesting standard that we're talking about tonight. The state of Oregon, you know, since 1973 has had statewide building codes. In 2017, the Division of Building Safety established this provision that said cities could locally adopt, it's alternative, it's optional, a standard that would allow for these transitional units that do not have to comply with the standard structural code that all other permanent structures have to comply with. It's kind of an interesting beast that the state had never done before. It's a separate standalone document that the state drafted and then said, here, cities, here's a template for you to work with. You can tweak it as you will because we, as a state, are not really having direct, our codes are not directly applying, but here's a model for you to work with. So, City of Grants Pass did that in large part because of Foundry Village on Foundry Street. And I'll show you a picture of that in just a second. But it basically gives cities broad flexibility to address transitional housing accommodations. That was really the purpose of why this Transitional Housing Code was set up. And then the 2020 ordinance was structured around, as I mentioned, Foundry Village. So, here's, on the upper left, what Foundry Village ended up being. There's these standalone, single sort of duplex units that are separated by about six feet. You have windows on all sides and doors. The bottom right one isn't a very good picture, but it just kind of gives you a glimpse into one of the rooms that's there. You can see you walk in and there's room for, you know, a bed and some kind of storage and shelving, things like that. So, that proposal for Foundry Village didn't work under the city's building code. So, in 2020, we adopted the Transitional Housing Code to allow for the development of Foundry Village. So, the design and construction standards that are in the code are intended to mitigate risks of public health or safety. That's under ORS 197, that's the language that's in there. Electrical and plumbing are not exempt. You still have to comply on these Transitional Housing Codes with all electrical and plumbing, but structural and energy are exempt from the standard structural code of Oregon and allowed to follow the local code. So, our current one that was adopted in 2020 has eight main sections, and it sets minimum design, construction requirements, things like that. The Elk Island proposal on their Redwood property is, as you know, a modified intermodal shipping container, also called Conex boxes. And those are not currently allowed under the city's Transitional Housing Code. There's some changes that would need to be made in order to accommodate those. And I think Stephanie brought this up when she was presenting the various proposals to you. All of those proposals would have required some amendment to today's code. So, basically what we'll do in the next few slides is just going to show you some of the key sections that need to change in order to accommodate the Elk Island proposal. So, here is the intermodal shipping container, this would be one. There's more than 25 of them proposed. But this is an example of, from the latest rendition that Mr. Woodard presented to you. So, it's a 40-foot container, there's four separate individual living units, each of them nine feet, six inches wide. Each of them has their own separate 36-inch door with beds on both sides and two windows per one of those four, per unit. So, that's the proposal that the council approved, and that is what the building department was working with Mr. Woodard on to see how does the code need to change in order to accommodate this design. So, there were a few sections. The first one really doesn't directly relate to this proposal, but it does delete the phrase campgrounds or transitional housing parcels. That language came from an early statute that in 2021 the legislature took out. So, because it's no longer in there, we're just proposing to align ourselves better with ORS and remove that as well. Section 106, this is on page 44 of your packet. This deletes the reference to the Assistant Development Charge Grants. This is a grant program that was indefinitely suspended by council a couple of months ago. So, since that's no longer available, that's being proposed to be stricken. Section 202, this is on page 45. This is where we actually insert the new definition for an intermodal shipping container. This is a pretty standard definition, kind of industry-wide, a six-sided steel unit originally constructed as a general cargo container used for the transport of goods and materials. So, that just sort of states, here's what we're talking about, that's the basic definition. There's also another change in that definition section to the definition of Transitional Housing Unit. Right now, it says a single-story detached structure providing transitional housing accommodations. As I showed you a minute ago, those aren't detached. There's four of them that are attached within a single container. So, in order to accommodate this, that definition would need to change. Section 301, this is talking about the interior finishes. So, in each of those four living units, right now, there's some language about cellular foam. This is a product of usually, you know, fairly thick, very dense kind of foam material that is not allowed for an interior finish. That's largely because of fire risk, it is a pretty flammable product. There is a provision in here, unless allowed by the Oregon Structural Specialty Code, there is very, very limited opportunity in the structural code where you can use that interior, you still have to have some other special treatment. But that, we did insert that just to give some more flexibility. Section 306.3, this is the clear floor space section. Basically, when you enter into the units, this talks about like how much room is there to maneuver around within each one of those? The door itself is 36 inches, and then you, of course, have some space beyond that before you get to the beds. This current language that's being stricken would not be accommodated within one of these Conex box units, but it does refer to the ICC section so that there is still accessibility accommodations that can be met. Ken Sandlin, our building official, has looked at this carefully. He's talked with Bernie, and this would be able to be met with this language under the ICC. Insulation, and I know one of the councillors had a question about this. So, it would amend this to strike out the phrase shall be rated by the insulation manufacturer. So, it would read insulation values shall be as listed below or as approved by the building official. So, these set the R-values that are required within those containers for the floor, for the walls, and for the ceilings. At this point, there's not, to my understanding, a final, exact design on the insulation that they propose to use, but each of these minimum values that are listed here would have to be met for whatever product they use in order to, in the construction process. A couple more here, section 312 on page 49. This talks about the attached-detached units. A maximum of two units shall be attached. Then we add that phrase C-section 312.3 because as we saw earlier, there's four attached. So, then you have this new section for intermodal shipping containers. It says each container shall be separated by six feet or one layer of five-inch Typex gypsum installed on the inside of each container that abuts another container. Each container can have up to four habitable rooms used for sleeping. So, that's a specific new section added to address this. At this point, they are proposing the gypsum option, not the six-foot separation. As you may recall, there are several that are stacked, both back-to-back and side-to-side. And so, in order to meet this, that 5/8 inch, you know, it's basically a drywall that is a high-grade drywall, it has glass in it, so it's particularly helpful for fire prevention, or at least reduction. So, that would have to be constructed on each wall that touches another container. So, you've got one container and they're back-to-back. You'd have one 5/8 inch on one side and one 5/8 inch on the other. That generally, in the industry, is about one hour of fire rating. On the foundation systems, there is a new sentence here, or a new phrase, at the bottom, foundations for intermodal shipping containers shall comply with the Oregon Structural Specialty Code. That deals with how those units will actually be placed on-site, which they'll have to accommodate the code there. There's, I think, pylons that are going to be proposed in this case where they have to set those corners on. So, those are the main changes. The cost implication, there really isn't, to the city to just adopt the text amendment. There's some staff time to enforce the standards, of course. Call to action, it's before you tonight. Your alternatives would be to adopt the proposed resolution, revise it, or deny it. I added a note there that if you do deny it, it would preclude Elk Island from using intermodal shipping containers as a legal transitional housing type. And there is a potential motion.
Questions from council, Eric, and then Rick.
Slide 13. On slide 13 there, proposed tax amendments, we've got that section there, 301.2. Use of cellular foam and foam plastic materials unless, and then it goes, it's highlighted, unless allowed by Oregon Structural Specialty Code. So, the plastic foam that you have, that you've mentioned, is that going to be a fire concern, being that we have a lot of homeless individuals that are going to be moving in there, they're not going to be, they're going to have substance abuse problems, all of these things? How is that going to be controlled to be able to see that it's going to be, they're not going to cause any kind of fire or anything like that? My concern is that it's pretty alarming that we have individuals in there with the potential to create some sort of a fire or some kind of a risk.
Chief, do you want to talk about that?
So, thank you for that question, councillor. So, with the Oregon Structural Specialty Code, as well as us looking at it from a fire code standpoint, everything that goes in there, we are going to adhere to the fire code. So, there is things that are made that are fire resistant, and that would be what we are pushing for as well. We wouldn't use something like the old stuff that I'm sure you're referencing that is basically like gasoline when it's, we're not going to be using that stuff, nor would we use that on anything even outside of this project. We would be pushing strict adherence to the fire code with that. So, this isn't something that we're necessarily concerned about because we've been working well together with his, Brad and his group and anybody that comes with site plan review, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you, chief. And then the other question, a follow-up question regarding this. Is there, the cost of these materials, are they going to skyrocket? I mean, is it more expensive than what was normally used in the past?
I don't know the cost of these particular ones, and it could very well be that there are no foam used. You know, this code is sort of laying out all the options that could be used. You know, there are different spray products, there's, you know, there's other ways to achieve, you know, R-value ratings. So, this is just kind of setting the baseline. So, but I apologize, council, I don't know in terms of the cost, how... I don't know in terms of the cost, how that might relate to Mr. Woodard and what the specific products are that he's going to use.
Thank you. I have one more question. Slide three, the last bullet that was put down there. Unless such amendment would result in an unreasonable risk to public health and safety. I guess the concern that I have is that we have this small lot, 268 feet by 75 feet lot. We're going to place 150 people in there, and then that's going to be not considered a health risk in some way. I mean, what if there's a, some sort of a pandemic of some kind, or a fire, or anything like that? How is that not considered a public health or safety risk?
Yeah, well, this code is only regulating the transitional housing structures themselves. The decision to allow for the number of units on the property, you know, was already made. So what we're talking about tonight is a contingency provision that was in the agreement that says, you know, in order to allow for the use of the containers specifically, there would need to be an amendment to the code. So when this talks about unless such amendment would result in an unreasonable risk, I think we're really talking about an amendment to the municipal code section that we talked about tonight. So I think what the council would need to do is if you had concerns about risk, I think those risks should be put onto the record, but they should be specific to the structure, not necessarily the overall site. At least, that's my view on it. I don't know if Stephanie has another thought on that.
Yeah, it's, we're still putting eight people into a 40-foot container. That's two people per room. That's nine foot by eight feet for two people to share. So that's a big concern.
Just a reminder that we're here to talk about the actual provisions of the code itself. The actual application and configuration aren't really at issue on this. It's the language itself. So any one of those, if you think that any one of those changes, regardless of what project it's applied to, would create that unreasonable risk to public health or safety, that's what we should be focusing on, not project-specific.
Okay. Thank you. And that's all I have at this time.
Other questions? Rick?
Thank you, Brad. Can you go to slide 15? So you mentioned energy is one of the provisions we can modify if we so desire, and the language in here includes the values shall be done as listed below or as approved by the building official. So if he wants to reduce those values according to this language in here, he has that discretion?
He does, and we talked quite a bit about that because at this point, you know, there hasn't been a detailed set of drawings submitted. What we have is the conceptual layout and sort of at a high level what they are proposing to construct. It could well be that they will come back during the plan review and say, you know, we want to put this much in the ceiling, or we want to do this on the floors, or we want to do this on the walls. The building official in the state's template, in the model code that the state has, you know, is given quite a bit of, you know, discretion. I mean, but, you know, Ken's objective as a building official is always safety number one, and of course, he'll work closely with the fire as well as potentially, you know, county public health, anybody that's needed in order to ensure that the basic public is need. And in this case, you know, what we're talking about is the amount of heat penetration that can happen. I mean, that's what the R-value is getting towards. Don't believe that they're proposing any AC. So we're really just talking about heat and how does that get managed in terms of the interior space? And so there's a lot of flexibility that this does give. If the council has concerns about that, then, you know, that's certainly up to you. That's what we're here to talk about tonight. But that does give the building official the flexibility.
I'm glad to hear that because I feel for such a small room, the requirements here would be, to me, would be excessive because of the small size of the room, and I'm glad to hear that they could reduce those and use something that still provides insulation, but maybe not to this extent. And also, on the discussion of fire, typically sheetrock can, as you already mentioned, can provide a lot of resolution of those concerns in different configurations. Thank you.
Other questions from council? I had one question. Did you say that there were, I think you mentioned that there are 25 proposed Conex boxes? 25 was the number?
I pulled that off the top of my head. It's
I think you're right. I just wanted to make sure that I wrote it down correctly. Okay, thank you. And this is, are there any people from the audience who would like to speak? All right, come on up. Make sure to state your name and your city of residence, and you have two minutes.
Bob McGuire, lifetime resident. My question is, so these are considered mobile homes? Going to be considered a mobile home? It's going to be, you know, be able to move it around? So in my years of work in construction, mobile homes have to be attached to the ground, and that's, you have to be permitted to even get a loan on a mobile home. So what's to say that this isn't a mobile home? So how are they going to attach these to the ground? People are going to be using them as a dwelling. So what's the difference between a Conex box, you're going to make it into a living house? Well, what's the difference between that and a regular mobile home? To me, I see, the laws have made it to where they're having to put one yard of concrete in the corners and put anchors in every mobile home around here, just to get them financed. And so I have helped do a lot of them. And so to me, it's a mobile home, and to me, I seem to think that they should be anchoring them to the ground, too. So, yeah, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Any other, yes, please come up.
Rika Brown, Grants Pass. I don't believe I've heard anything about windows in these boxes. That could get really depressing if you don't have something you can look outside of. Thank you.
Any other, yes, please. State your name and your city of residence. You have two minutes.
Bonnie McDonald, and I'm a resident of Grants Pass. I have a question about the insulation. If one unit catches on fire, is it going to be isolated to that one unit, or will it spread to all the other units? When you have high-density people in a small group, I mean, how are we going to protect these people? And also, all the things inside, if they get damaged by someone, who pays for that? And if somebody gets hurt, who's going to be accountable for that? I know I've heard from our prior city council member that the jail has a two-person jail cell, but, and you can later tell me if this is true or not, but she said that there was a two-person jail cell, but they can only put one person in there because they might hurt each other. So they're only using half-capacity at the jail. So you're putting two people that have a drug addiction and emotional problems crammed together. How are you going to keep all these people safe? That's just my question.
Other comments from the audience? All right, seeing none, we will bring it back to council for discussion. Rick?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution amending the 2017 Oregon Transitional Housing Standard to add intermodal shipping containers as an allowable type of transitional housing unit.
And I see a second. And I would like to offer a possible friendly amendment, Rick. I wanted to draw people's attention to the fact that 25 units are proposed, and the cost is allocated. I know that we are not speaking about the RFP, but I think it's very, very important for the public to know that the cost is going to be likely double for these. And at 25 units, the cost would be $1.3 million. I would also like to draw council's attention to the fact that this was tried in Los Angeles in '22 and '24. It was closed because of mold, heat failure, electrical failure, and $1.2 million were put into fixes, but half the units had to be demolished in Phoenix. They tried this project, and the heat was so prohibitive inside the units. It was 102 degrees to 108 degrees, and there were heat-related hospitalizations and calgory this was tried, and 40% were condemned for mold and water damage after only two winters and other extreme temperature swings in Conex boxes. Fire does spread inside the container in 90 seconds. Toxic chemical residues can leach from the containers. Rust and water intrusion in Western, in our Western Oregon climate can occur within three to seven years. And a yes vote on this would likely lead to one of two unacceptable situations for the city, allowing a dangerously, A, allowing a dangerously substandard housing that could expose the city to legal risk, or B, the RFP being unable to cover costs, leaving the city with the responsibility of paying tons or hundreds of thousands of more dollars when the building officials and/or fire marshals require corrective upgrades to meet code. Neither option is responsible nor financially sound, and we owe it to our homeless neighbors, our taxpayers, and our community to vote no on this. This RFP does not require Conex boxes. They have proven to be, in three other cities, highly dangerous and cost ineffective. And so I will absolutely be voting no. There is no reason to push forward a code change on something that is potentially this dangerous. So with that, if there are any, my friendly amendment would be to, if you would like to amend, to, no, you would not like to change the housing code, Rick. That's my friendly amendment.
Thank you, Victoria, for expressing your concerns. I will not be modifying my proposal, and the reason being, this ordinance, this does not include addressing the number of units you can have or not have, does not address the cost to the individual, whether they want to spend $1 or $10,000 on each unit that is not in here. And also, in following what's happened in Phoenix, I believe those are modular homes that incurred mold inside, and they were not Conex. So the suggestions you have here tonight are not applicable to this action, so I would not be modifying my motion. Thank you.
Any other comments?
It's interesting that, you know, the RFP was approved and it didn't meet city code. And I mentioned my concern with the tight space for these, for this specific project. And it's very concerning to me that we have to change the code to be able to make this happen. My concern, again, I'm going to reiterate that we have drug-addicted people, mentally disabled people going into this area, and we're going to be transferring these problems from downtown to in front of Buy Mart. I know we have to talk about the code here, but I think it's interesting that we are having to change up the code to be able to make this work. It's very concerning to me that we're putting in this tight amount of space, all of these And I mentioned before, what if we have a pandemic of some kind? What happens to individuals that get sick? How is that going to, how is that going to, how is that going to play out? What are the mitigations, mitigating factors that we're going to do to make sure that that is handled properly? We're putting in a lot of these people in this small space. So I'll be voting no for this because I'm very concerned about this inhumanness of the way these people will be treated in this tight conditions. It's unfortunate these people will have to exist with this and with no end in sight. So I'll be, my vote will be no.
So I'll be voting yes, and this amendment is needed regardless of who was with the RFP. All the proposals, including pathways, would have required a code amendment. It's being done exactly for the reason we talked about, and that was safety and fire. When I look at the other towns, Medford and their density down there and their houses, it's very similar, if not more, because it's, it just is what it is. And they've done it safely. So I'll be voting yes.
Other comments? We'll begin a roll call vote. We'll begin with, we'll just go ahead and begin with Joel again.
Thank you, Honorable President. I'll vote yes.
No.
Yes.
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 And I absolutely vote no because this is neither cost-effective nor safe, and so I have a definite no. But I believe staff has direction.
Yes, thank you.
The next agenda item is a resolution approving the purchase of real property at the assessors' map number, tax lot, is this, oh, okay. And Wade, we have a presentation from. Thank you.
Good evening, Council President and council. Today, I'll be talking about the right-of-way purchase of property on Oak Street, and my name is Wade Elliott. Subject and summary is to consider authorizing city manager to purchase 207 Southwest Oak Street at the negotiated price, and it supports council's goal of infrastructure and creates efficiencies and safety within the transportation system. So in September of this year, council provided direction to move forward with the relocation of the Booth Street railroad crossing to Dimick Street, which is a continuation of Highland. And staff has identified that realigning the G and Oak Street intersection would result in safer driving conditions, and I'll get into some pictures here in a second to show you why. And on October 13th, council provided negotiating parameters for the purchase of the property. So the existing conditions of Southwest Dimick Street, Oak Street, and the intersection with G Street, as you can see, they're misaligned, they're offset, which creates some potential conflicts as the turning movements don't line up, and it's a little difficult for conflicts as the turning movements don't line up, and it's a little difficult for drivers. Traffic volumes are currently low at this intersection because Dimick only accesses the neighborhoods in the area, as well as Oak Street to some degree. But after the railroad crossing is relocated and the street is upgraded, we anticipate that the traffic volumes will go up a lot at that intersection. And so we need to make it a little bit safer as we look to the future. The arrow here points to 207 Southwest Oak Street. And here's a very early preliminary sketch of what the design will look like. As you can see, we're going to kind of do a little bit of a curve on Oak Street that will align it better with Dimick Street. The highlighted tax lot there is the one in question tonight, and portions of it will be dedicated as right-of-way or vacated as right-of-way, and the other portions will be a city lot for some future use. Another benefit of this is we look at the future, we don't exactly know what the traffic volumes are going to be, but in the future, it could be high enough that it'll be warranted to have some sort of a traffic signal or additional turn lanes or something like that in the future, and this will afford the opportunity and space to do that. The lot had an appraised value of $149,840 and an assessed value of $83,400. The negotiating parameters were less than $100,000, and we came to a tentative agreement at $97,000 for this parcel. Project TR 6247's been around for a really long time, and it's got adequate funding in there for this, for this purchase, as well as the design, and then we'll have to fund it in future budget cycles. So this call to action is scheduled tentatively for tonight, but it can be deferred at council's discretion. The closing date is tentatively scheduled through the escrow company, title company, for the 17th of this month, so it could be pushed out if we want to. I think the sellers are willing enough to work with us, but it would be optimal to do that tonight. So the alternatives would be to authorize the city manager to purchase the property, or you could not, or direct staff to go back and renegotiate or anything like that. So with that, any questions?
Questions? All right. Seeing none, thank you. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none, we will bring it back to council for discussion and/or motions. Eric?
I think we're ready to move on this potential motion. I move to approve the resolution for purchase of real property at assessor's map number 36-05-18-DB, tax lot 2900, with the address of 207 Southwest Oak Street.
And I have a second from Joel. And any discussion? We'll begin a roll call vote. We'll begin with, just at the other end now, Rob?
Yes.
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 And yes, and I believe staff has direction. Thank you. Next up on our agenda, we have a resolution amending the comprehensive fee schedule for annual cost of living index adjustments and revisions. And JC has a presentation for us, thank you.
Good evening, Council. I have what you just read, I won't read it again. This is an annual housekeeping item that we bring forward to you approximately each December. So I'm going to go over what we're amending based on our CPI, which is a cost of living index adjustment. And then also, this time, we like to do some housekeeping and find some of our minor amendments and revisions, and this relates to your council goals as far as fiscal stability. So a little bit of the background, just for everybody in the audience, because I know everybody's going to be riveted about this. The CPIU is the Consumer Price Index Urban, which comes to us from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, and then council acknowledges this annually again. There are various ordinances and resolutions approved in the past that specify CPI-based adjustments to various city fees and charges to help city operating divisions keep up with the cost of inflation over time. And then these annual changes happen January 1st of each year, based on a CPIU for the period of November to October. It's kind of a funky year because of the implementation for January. We try and set that back at least that two-month period because it takes the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics about 15 days to come up with those statistics. So we really are in a pinch as far as how fast we kind of put this all together. And so the automatic inflation adjustments are applied to all the main city utility user rates, SDCs, and many but not all of the planning and engineering fees. And I do want to make a point, as of November 5th, 2025, this also includes some of the approved additional adjustments by council for the water rates. This year's adjustment, based on the published monthly CPIU changes, is 2.7, and I'm going to kind of go over this, this is a little awkward this year. I want to point out that you kind of have a consistent kind of percentage growth of inflation over the 12-month period, and then we have a null in October. And so because of the federal government shutdown, this information was not readily available. So staff is proposing that we only go with an 11-month average because, based on some of the news that we are getting from various credible sources, we may not never get that data. So we just want to move forward with the 11-month average and go with it from that and basically not count October for anything to go forward with the percentage change. And as checking it today, it's still not available, so we don't know if it ever will be. And there is in your packet a very large portion of this document, there's a track changes, so I'm going to go over some of the major changes or the edits that we made that are not CPI-based. So on pages six through eight, a surcharge of $341 was applied to all the type 3 and type 4 land use applications. The surcharge was calculated because of the new requirements outlined in an ordinance passed in March 7th of 2025, and these are all building and planning changes. Again, pages six through eight, changing the titles of charges to reflect that same ordinance. Page eight, we increased the temporary use fee based on a trend in data showing an increase in the number of hours to process these type of applications. For engineering, on page 20, we added a stormwater calculation fee associated with new developments, utilizing the city engineer to verify calculations are in a conformance with the city's stormwater management manual. On page 20, we also updated some of our internal billing rates based on the increased costs of staff. In finance, on page 29 and 30, we added descriptions of what a unit is actually referring to. On page 29, we included a minimum and a maximum amount collected for deposit on commercial and public water services. And then on page 30, we added a brewery volume charge and a wastewater bulk processing charge. In parks and recreation, on page 32, we removed all the fees related to the River Vista House. In economic development, on page 19, we added a new section outlining special events with the economic development department. This was a separate resolution before, and so this is just incorporating this all into one document. In public works, on page 37, we separated the public utility services from the actual GIS charges, gave it some headers so you know what we're talking about. Page 37, we also updated some of those internal billing rates for the utility worker position. And then we moved the civil penalty to the end of the charges because it made sense to, that was the conclusion of if you didn't do or meet the standards. And with that, I have a call to action up here and a potential motion, and I'll take any questions, and hopefully some of my cohorts here on the executive leadership team will answer anything specific you may have.
Joel?
So I got a construction project going on next to me, and the contractor constantly reminds me of all these city fees and what they add up to on a, and this was a reconstruction of a house and desperately needed it. And as I was looking at some of these fees, so like an ortho photo for $2,000. Jason, let me know what's going on there, bud.
So the GIS ortho, and I'm going to get the words wrong, that's our aerial photography.
What do they cost us?
It costs us close to $20,000 a year.
For ortho photos for the whole city?
Yes.
And how many are there?
Oh, it comes as one big package, so you don't get a single image of, say, a little grid.
So you just cut it out in GIS and then give it to them?
Yeah, and so what this is, is to provide the entire aerial photography to someone who wants it. It's not printing out a picture of the city and giving it to somebody, it's actually giving them the base photography.
Sure.
So it has a very high value. Nobody's ever asked for it, and when we do get a request, we will give them a little snip of an area if they're using it. And a lot of them just pull it right from our website anyway.
Sure, and you could, I mean, it's probably available for free on the internet, I would guess.
It is. I mean, that's what I'm saying, not as detailed as what we have. Our resolution is really, really, really good.
Okay, okay. It just seems like it's, I'm not sure if that's the right word, superfluous.
And we can remove it easily from a fee schedule. I don't, as I said, in the time that I've been working on GIS, nobody has actually asked for it.
Well, they would be dumb if they did.
Well, it has a really significantly high value. I mean, $2,000 is actually cheaper than getting it flown for yourself.
I understand, I understand. I mean, we get them for hunting, you know, but I wouldn't pay $2,000 for it. The other thing I was thinking of was wastewater. I'm just picking on little things, and please respond because it does seem to me like the culmination of this does detrimentally affect the cost of housing. And maybe unnecessarily, maybe it's necessary to run the city operations, I don't know. So the inspection of the wastewater, and I can't remember what page it's on, you went over those really quickly, but it was a percentage of the value of the project. You remember what page that's on? No? Okay. It was in the thousands of dollars, and I wondered how many inspection visits there are for wastewater.
I'm going to, I'd have to know exactly what the fee, because this could be going to the building department more than the
Public Works?
Public Works Department.
Okay.
Because they do the plumbing and inspection permits.
Sure.
We do inspections based on what's going into the ground. And so if it is part of a capital, I'm sorry, I didn't
I'm speaking over you, I apologize.
No, that was, I spoke over you.
I love what you do, I love what you do. I was just trying to ascertain what is the cost per inspection? Because here, we got the total inspection job for wastewater, and it was in the thousands of dollars, and I just wondered how many inspections that involves.
Again, if it's building, I couldn't speak to that because I'm unaware. If it is for a capital project, that's kind of baked into a different area in the fee schedule. It could be three or four inspections, or it could be two or three daily inspections as they're going along and doing the work. So it really, really does depend. I'm assuming that the other one really is related to building.
Let me be quiet, and I'll look up the specific line item.
Yeah, that would be helpful if you knew exactly what line item you're talking about. We can provide the specifics.
That'll help all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrea?
My question is, so there were a lot of fee changes in building and planning and engineering, like who decides which things should go up and what and which things shouldn't? How does the staff come up with that and the amount that it should go up?
So going backwards to go forwards, most of the ones you're talking about, the planning, the engineering, they by resolution or ordinance are tied to CPI, and so that's why a lot of these are being edited. The ones I called out specifically in these lists are the ones that staff feels like they're not tied by any ordinance, but based on the work that it takes to do then, that they felt necessary to increase and/or match and marry, like when we talk about internal billings for actual work crew to go out there, that we adjust those rates up because the cost of personnel has gone up.
So all of the, are you saying all of the ones except for those are tied, are a 2.71% increase?
Correct.
Then why on page 137 that we have, so now there's a new, we talked, and I, this caught my eye because we just talked about the water fees and the shut-off, and the gal sat there and said there is no fee for shutting off or turning on, but now there's a shut-off fee of $25. And now, instead of a courtesy notice, that's going to cost $15. So if your, a resident is late on water and you send a notice out, now they owe money more for that. So that's not tied to CPI, right?
So the shut-off notice is actually in our municipal code, and so that is correct, is not tied to CPI, and that's probably just highlighting, and I might have missed this as far as showing the revision, but that is because someone is delinquent on their account, and part of our way for ensuring payment is we do, in fact, shut off people of their utilities. The shut-off that you're talking about that happened a couple weeks ago, that is when somebody just moves out or wants to shut off their service, we do not charge for that.
So since this isn't tied to CPI, might there be other things in here that are not also tied to CPI, or are you saying everything else is?
I would say most of everything else, because we're looking at adjusting the pennies on the track changes, is going to be tied to CPI.
So most, but not all?
Correct.
We'd have to go line by line, really, to figure that out.
Right, and I might have missed that one as an addition, too.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak on this issue? And seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Joel?
What I'll do, Jason, is I'll, with Erin's permission, and if, I'll go through Erin, but I just would like some explanation on some of the items, because some of them seem excessive to me, and I really am ignorant, so I don't know that, but I just want to know, like, what does it cost for one inspection? And the one thing I was wondering about, a copy of the code was in the thousands of dollars, is that correct? Have you get a copy of the code?
We'd be more than willing to sit down with you and answer your questions specifically with regards to certain aspects of the services.
If that's the case, in other places, it calls for 25 cents a page, and so I don't know how long the code is, maybe it's that long, I don't know. Anyway, we need to look at those, if there are discrepancies, and fix them.
Andrea?
I understand this is an annual event, and I don't know, because this is my first time, if it's mostly just rubber stamp through, but I am not in favor of just pushing this through without looking at it a little more. I just want to speak to my colleagues that the proposal to raise the building and planning and engineering and some finance fees at a time when Grants Pass is experiencing virtually no new building activity, and when our commercial corridors, especially downtown, the Parkway and key employment zones, are still struggling to attract investment. First, I think raising the fees sends a wrong message to the very builders, entrepreneurs, and property owners that we're trying to encourage. Grants Pass has spent many years discussing how to diversify our economy and expand our commercial tax base, we talked about that tonight. Yet if we increase planning, building and planning and engineering fees, the cost during a construction slowdown, we create another barrier for anyone considering a project here. Increasing fees when construction activity is already stagnant risks creating an even higher barrier of entry for builders, business owners, and prospective tenants. For small developers, independent businesses, and entrepreneurs, the very individuals that we sit up here and try to encourage, additional fees can be the difference between moving forward on a project or abandoning it altogether. For commercial tenants looking to locate or expand in Grants Pass, these added costs ultimately translate into higher rents, reduced viability of new ventures, and fewer options in our local market. and fewer options in our local market. That means fewer new businesses opening, more vacant storefronts, and less long-term economic activity. Also, I think it's contradictory for us as a council to increase fees on the front end while simultaneously offering financial incentives on the back end to attract development. We can't claim we want to encourage investment, then raise the price of the very process required to get a project off the ground. Additionally, the lack of building, in my belief, isn't because fees are too low, it's because the economy is tight, financing is difficult, and our community's growth has slowed. Raising fees will not increase revenue. If anything, it may further depress the number of applications, resulting in no meaningful financial gain for the city. In a slow market, the smartest strategy is to keep barriers low so that we are positioned to capture opportunities when they come. My position is not that fees should never be reviewed or adjusted, and I think we should take a look at the different fees, and certainly we should adjust some as we want to. But if we truly want to revitalize our commercial centers, reduce vacancies, and support local employers, then we must avoid policies that inadvertently make Grants Pass less attractive, if not impossible, for new or expanding businesses. This increase may seem small, but as Counselor King pointed out, the cumulative impact on development costs can be significant. And at this moment, I believe it's the wrong direction for our community. I would propose, I feel rushed, and I hear that now we're supposed to get it done by January, but I propose we hold off on a vote tonight and defer the matter to a future workshop. We can review alternative avenues at that time to meet the city's financial obligations. Thank you.
So you said propose, was that a motion?
Yes, I would make a motion to defer to a future workshop to talk about this.
Would we like to have a time date, sir?
We'd be scheduling it in order to try to continue to meet our schedule, likely at the next workshop on the 15th or something, no?
That won't work. So if I could make a friendly just suggestion to council of if, if really the planning, building fees are the ones that you're really most worried about right now, is just approve the utility fees and then amend to not change all of the building and planning and other engineering fees.
So that was a possibility, is there, so would you entertain a friendly amendment to just take the planning?
No, I would like to look at all of the fees, and I guess they would just stay how they are. It said somewhere in there, we can adjust them at any time through the year, I think you said that. So as soon as we can look and talk about these, you know, we can maybe quickly come to a resolution.
There is a second, and any discussion? Joel?
Well, the other side of the coin is that costs do go up, and cost of living is general estimator of what it is across the board. And, and there are some, you know, I got questions on individual items. But wages are going up, materials are going way up, much more than 2% or 3% or whatever that was. And I don't want to put us in a bind. Yet I think we need, we got some legitimate questions, and I don't know, you know, how much the staff has looked at it recently. Like, let me give you one example, and it's neither here nor there, but on page six, or on page 113, the development code, a publication, just a publication, it costs $100. The comp plan publication costs $100. The master transportation plan costs $100. The wetlands plan costs $50. And then down below, you can get photocopies for 10 cents a page. And you don't need to answer this now, but the obvious question would be, are those documents 1,000 pages long? Maybe they are, I don't know. You know, there's just, there's just, just some, and they're not, I mean, they're not major, but when I hear, hear, what I'm hearing from the contracting community, you know, you need to hear them too. And we, and we just need to be open and do what we need to do. And whether this amendment or this motion is a way to do it, I don't know.
Rick?
So Brad, when I bring an application in or have an application for planning, a lot of times, I just go on the internet and I can search that document and see that document, and I can print it home on my own computer. So when you see these figures in here, how often have you ever had anybody come in and ask for a physical copy versus just that they can make their own? Does it happen that often?
No, like Jason mentioned for the mapping, I'm sure in the last three years, we haven't had a single request. I don't know prior to that, but it's very, very rare. In this day and age, everything is PDF online.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, but we don't have an identify, I guess at our next workshop. But then JC was saying that wouldn't work for a particular reason, so.
We'll get together with staff, we'll have some suggested dates for our meeting that we have tomorrow when we set the agenda.
All right, and so, all right, okay, so to be put to a future workshop or business meeting, and, but we are going to postpone the voting on this, that is the motion with the second. Rob?
Yes.
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 And yes, and so I think staff has direction.
Yes, thank you.
And the next item up on our agenda are appointments. And so the first appointment is historical buildings, and so you have a
No. Withdraw.
Oh, no, it's not historical buildings?
It is, but the single applicant withdrew.
Oh, okay, oh, thank you. So our first is the urban area planning, and that is a pink-colored document. So if you will circle, there is one opening on the commission. Three candidates have applied, and they are listed. And if you will circle your preferred candidate and pass it down? And so we have five votes for one candidate, and that is Keith Traherne, and one vote for one candidate, J.W. Oler. And so I would be looking for a motion. Indra.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve Keith Traherne to the Urban Planning Commission.
And is there a second? I see a second roll call. Joel?
Yes.
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 And I will also vote yes, and so
Who was the second on that?
Oh, the second was Eric, thank you. Next up are motions appointing for the urban area planning, and that is a, oh, oh, excuse me, Parks and, Parks Advisory Committee, your green paper. And we, there are two openings on this commission, four candidates have applied. If you will circle your preferred candidates and pass down your ballot. All right, so we have a clear preference for the two candidates. There are five votes for Reed Belmont and five votes for Valerie Lovelace. And we have one vote for Robert Woolers and one vote for Maliko Young. And so I'd be looking for a motion, yes, Joel?
So if I heard you correctly, I move that Reed Belmont and Valerie Lovelace be placed on the two openings for the Park Advisory Committee.
All right, and do I have a second, a second from Indra? And we'll start a roll call, we'll start with Joel.
Yes.
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 And yes, and then next up, we have a Public Safety Advisory Committee, your last ballot. And will you circle your budget committee and then the city non-resident, non-business owner, and pass those down? All right, well, we are unanimous. We have six for Adriana Reinhardt and six for Donald Fashing. And so I would look for, do we need to have a motion for this one? And it was unanimous, okay, so I'm looking for a motion. Joel?
So I make a motion to have Adriana Reinhardt fill the budget committee member that's vacant, the position that's vacant, and the Honorable Donald Fashing fill the city resident, non-business owner vacancy on the, I believe that's the Public Safety Committee, correct?
Yes.
On the Public Safety Committee.
And I have a second from Rick, and Joel?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, so next up on our agenda, we have public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the city council on items not related to a public hearing or a council action item for the council. The intent is to provide information that is pertinent to the city's jurisdiction. Each speaker will be given two minutes to address the council as one body, not to individuals. At the conclusion of public comment, council will have the opportunity to respond. This meeting will proceed in an effective and courteous manner. Citizens and council members will be allowed to state their positions in an atmosphere free of slander, threats, or other personal attacks, signs, placards, or outbursts of applause. Campaigning for public office or other disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. If you have a question regarding any government-provided service or current city policy, please contact the city manager's office in an attempt to resolve the matter. And up tonight, first and only, so the one and only Rika Brown this evening.
Rika Brown, stranger than fiction. Reading the Daily Courier, I found an Associated Press short, single-column article, "New Analysis Shows More Americans Are Falling Behind on Their Utility Bills." The first thing I noticed was that they'd mentioned only electricity and natural gas utilities. Water and sewer are ignored, along with various city service fees, in many cities. They have surpassed these combined prices of electricity and natural gas together. Water and sewer are monopolies. Every city sets their own rates. The second was that Trump is blamed for promoting AI, which uses massive amounts of electricity, as though it wouldn't happen without his say-so. Electricity and natural gas prices are both regulated by state public utility commissions. Why did AP ignore water and sewer utilities? Because the resulting dryness and heat of the air, land, and surface water from less city irrigation provides the evidence of so-called climate change, which they blame on carbon dioxide and methane. Water vapor is the only major greenhouse gas, at 1% to 4% of the air, but it also cools and warms the air and objects by phase changes, evaporative cooling, condensative warming, and clouds that do both. Water is the moderator of our weather. As humidity drops, temperatures and winds become more extreme. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have a copy of this for you, so you can read, I have a copy of this, so you can read the
Over here.
Associated Press on it.
Thank you. All right, that was the, that was the only blue card that we got, and you have to turn those in at the beginning of the meeting. And so I believe we have to stick with that unless there was another blue card that was turned in that I was not aware of. Okay, and so I do see that there's someone who may have wanted to do that and possibly didn't know the procedure. So I would just advise that community member to make sure to email mayorcouncil@grantspassoregon.gov, and so that you can have your, so that you can let us know what you were saying. But you do have to turn in the blue sheet before, and so, thank you. And so next up on our agenda is our consent agenda. Items included are of such routine nature that without controversy, so they may be approved with a single action. And so I am looking for questions or comments or possible motions for our consent agenda. Rick?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through K, as written.
And I have a second from Joel. Any discussion? We'll start with a roll call, Joel?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, and so next up on our agenda this evening is matter for mayor and council. And do we have any matters for mayor and council? Indra?
Yes, I just want to put out a shout-out for Main Street and their shop-dine-and-win holiday promotions started. And I think it goes till December 20th, so for anyone listening, hope you get involved and help our local downtown businesses.
Other matters for council? All right, well, I would like to, oh, Rick, okay, go ahead, there might be the same thing.
Victoria and I have been assisting the people for the Christmas parade and coming up with names to, as the newspaper indicated, up with names to, as the newspaper indicated, for volunteer vehicles to form a blockade at different streets, just to provide safety. We're still looking for people, and the list is growing, but it looks like it will be successful, there's a couple, I would say hurdles isn't right, but paperwork that still needs to be processed for the parade to go forward, but it seems likely that will occur, and the parade will be Saturday, December 13th. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, I was going to also mention that, that, and just, I would add, Rick, that it was really wonderful seeing the community volunteers come together to make sure that this happens and that we have increased safety for everyone, and it does, we all, we can always use more volunteers, but we are close to or at the number of volunteers that we need, but please let us know if you would like to be a part of that, and so that's really exciting, and I believe this Friday is the, I don't want to give the wrong date, but this Friday is our Christmas tree lighting beginning at...
Yes, well, activities kick off at, at, at really 3:00 PM, but the lighting will be at 7 o'clock, and activities will go all the way through 9:00 PM that night, so 3 to 9, there's something going on with the tree lighting at 7 o'clock with Santa rolling in.
And that, that is pretty exciting, thank you.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, oh, Joel?
I just want to encourage all of us to shop local, and it's easy to get online, and that money doesn't recirculate amongst our community and support our local businesses, and I know a lot of us already shop local, but think twice about it, and if we can shop local and find what you need, do it, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, and any other items? One last thing, I want to make sure that, I just wanted to direct staff to make sure that we get the CCB license for our RFP developer, and I wanted to point out that the developer on record at this point, people might want to look to the CCB history of the current developer, I think that the public might be interested in the history of the person who may be executing, or the, the, the development country, the company that might be executing the, the grant, so, but with that, we will move on to do staff.
Sure, thank you, oh, wait, I think there was a council member that had a comment.
Indra?
Yes, that just prompts me to say that I have every confidence in the Elk Island to go forward with the project, I'm very hopeful, as are many members of the community, hopeful that this will move along quickly, that we will get our homeless population out of the A Street encampments into a better situation where they will get help, and I think we should all get behind that, it's a community effort, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to staff.
Great, thank you, and the parade, the Christmas parade, I think, is scheduled for 6 o'clock, that was the one piece that, that was, I just wanted to add there. So I want us to, I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving on council and all of our community members, I want to take us back to Thanksgiving just briefly, and if you could think about, what were you doing at noon on Thanksgiving? I know I was getting all ready and packed up to bring some goodies over to have a great Thanksgiving dinner. Well, I want to give a shout-out to some special individuals and my colleagues today. On Thanksgiving Day at around noon, Eric Larson was at our wastewater treatment plant, and a severe block, blockage occurred. There's a lot of stuff going down the lines at, at around noon, Thanksgiving Day, yes, and this was a part of the plant where it was significant, and it totally impaired the whole plant operations, this was, this was bad. So Eric Larson, Aaron Bowman, Tristan Push, spent several hours attempting to clear the line, they tried everything, they tried the old snake, they tried, let's throw this thing in reverse and see if we can reverse the pumping to get this thing unstuck, and nothing was working. We tried a, a local drain cleaner and rotor rudder people to see if they can come out, and unfortunately it was the holidays, and we couldn't get really anybody out there, and so, we reached out to our city utilities, and we did an on-call, a call, and Ken Howland responded immediately, he's with our collections crew, he brought our wonderful Vector truck that we have. Vector trucks provide high-pressure water to push and/or suck things through, and with his experience utilizing the Vector truck, and Eric's efforts, and Tristan's, and everyone's efforts that were there, we were able to get the thing unplugged. But during the meantime, while we were enjoying our Thanksgiving dinner, the work environment was less than ideal, there was gray water, black water, they were working in the muck. So I just want to give a special shout-out, not only to my colleagues, but to the family members who missed their colleagues during the Thanksgiving dinner, thank you very much for keeping our, our city safe and clean.
All right, thank you, and I think we, there, all right, I'm looking for a motion, oh, staff comments, oh, I apologize, did I miss anyone? I thought that was staff comments. All right, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn, Eric?
A motion to adjourn.
All right, I, thumbs up to adjourn, and I think we're adjourned, thank you.